...of God in the business of justice.
Father God, it's once again Lord God we're coming. I must never know how he had bound eyes closed, probably just want to thank you. For all your loving, your kindness and your tender mercy. You've been so good to us. And thank you, God, for how you allowed us to settle it ourselves together this afternoon to discuss county business. Father God, we ask that you bless this county and bless these councilors. As each and every one in this room today, God. Help us all be do with other word. Help us, God, to do what's right for this county. In your name I consent all of us. Praise, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we're now under item number three. Approval of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda.
Can I say one thing up here? Um, and it's just an opinion. I feel like if a councilman has an idea or concern they'd like to put on the agenda before today, that it should be put on the agenda. We want to vote it down, we can vote it down. It can be voted for. But I just feel like unless it's something just totally crazy.
It should be... If you do it ahead of time, so it's...
Yeah.
Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Chilton?
Okay. Well, we can't come to this meeting...
No, no, we just before that.
Okay. We got a motion to approve the agenda.
I may get motion approved.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll get any discussion. I'm going to favorize the right of him. Okay, down number four. Approval of amendments, 428-16. We have a motion to approve the amendments.
Don't move.
Yes, sir.
I see.
Any discussion. I'm going to favorize the right of him. Okay, we're down to new business. We have paper across the building, county public private project, he cannot develop partnership. So what he's going to give us update.
Mr. Chairman, before you... The agenda was amended. And so just to clear the record of the agenda, I believe is to get approved as it was amended, not amended.
Okay. Would the motion is to approve the agenda?
amended.
I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Hold on a second, a second. Everybody, please.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
How about...
Everybody vote for him.
I'll stay with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your opportunity to come in and giving our end report to county council. And in that package that I handed out to y'all today, it's included an updated financial report from last July. It went from our annual year to today and gives you an updated financial report. If you have any questions, we got our treasurer, Mr. Robert Abson. He'd be glad to answer them. I can't answer any financial questions. Financial guy. So as we go through our presentation, if you see anything you'd like to ask, then be sure and let us know when Mr. Abson address that part of it. I wanted to open up by saying we'd like to thank you for your support of the Dillon County Public Private Partnership Board that you created several years ago to make economic development a better arm and a better tool in Dillon County. We've had our ups and downs and in and outs and all of those kind of things with our board. And we're just like any other board. We had growing things and we got things that we had to deal with, things we had to work through to get our board to where it stands today, which I think is in pretty good shape. We've got our vice chairman here with us today, Mr. Havin Nobles. As I said earlier, Mr. Robert Abson's our treasurer. We got Mr. Josephine Gilchrist and Mr. Charles Taylor. Of course, always Mr. Tony McNeil is our guru and advisor in economic development. We work very closely with him in economic development. But he's got his own of development and we've got ours. And that's something we worked with. I mean, Tony and our board, we sort of, you know, do our things and he does his, we do ours, but we work together. We're in the same office, so we spend time together. But I wanted to go over some highlights of things that we've been able to accomplish in the last year. Number one, under our bullet points is updated financial report. And if you have any questions, let me know at the end of presentation. Mr. Abson is here to answer any questions. Also, Boeing scholarship, sponsorship to Boeing coming into town was a big deal. We had that out at Shrews BBQ and we had, a lot of you were there. And it's fixed well at Dillon County for a company like Boeing to want to come in and be able to meet Dillon County and to acquaint themselves with the citizens of Dillon County. And to get in our school districts and to do things that they couldn't ordinarily do or wouldn't ordinarily do. We sort of sponsored that that day. And the South County Department of Commerce, Long with Mr. McNeil put it together, but we wanted to get involved and so we got involved with the schools and we got the schools to open their doors and allow them to come in and talk to our students. And they were able to talk to the students in Latta and in Dillon that day. And then also meet out at lunch at Shrews, the U and the middle lot of people in Dillon County. So that was one of the highlights of that year that we were able to work with Boeing in that sponsorship. Also, our industry appreciation luncheon, we do that every year. We just had that a few weeks ago out at Shrews, too. And that was very successful. We have a good bit of our industry there and a lot of you were there. And we appreciate your participation. We appreciate your support as we move forward, working together in economic development in Dillon County. Our existing industry is the strongest part of our economic development. I mean, we all reach out to new industry and we're trying to get new companies in here. But we've got to take care of the companies that we've got. We've got to show them that they're important and they are important to us. And we've been able to do a lot of that this year, working with existing industry and trying to meet their needs. And as I go forward in my reports, we'll see more of that. One of the highlights of our accomplishments this year was the organization of our Workforce Development Focus Group. We, the biggest item probably and the biggest, most important piece of economic development now, it's got to be workforce training. It's got to be. Because it's one thing to get industry, it's another thing to get the jobs. You guys work real hard to get Wyman Gordon in here. We did a lot to get them in here. Sacrificed, everybody sacrificed, everybody negotiated, everybody worked hard to get them here, but that's not the end. You know, in the past, we've always felt like that if we get them here, that's all we need to do. But we failed in that endeavor, brothers. We failed. Because workforce development is the key. I mean, it may be loading trucks and it may be a low skill paying job, fine. But when you're building airplanes, it's a different story. And so Wyman Gordon is an airplane manufacturing company that they build these planes that fly in the sky. And it takes a little bit of higher skill level to work those jobs. And so we learned that when we began this process with them, is that we've got to do better than what we've been doing as far as providing the workforce. Sure, we got a workforce, but it's got to be a skilled workforce. It's got to be a trained workforce. Where they're not going to hire people off the street to go out and build jet airplanes. They don't do that. And so we learned in a hurry that we've got to try to put together some way to train our people in Dillon County. It's always been my peeve. I've told you that in county council meetings before. And it's always been the soapbox that I stand on and preach on. Is that jobs aren't doing us any good if our people don't get them. I mean, we can create all the jobs we want to, but if the people in Dillon County don't get a job, we're not helping Dillon County. And so what we've done this year is, and I'm very proud of this fact, is that we've organized a workforce development focus group. Mr. Richard Schaefer, he's the chairman of the Dillon County School Board. Dr. Ron Bartley is the president of Northeastern Technical College. Dr. John Kirby is the superintendent of Latta School District. Mr. Ray Rogers is the superintendent of Dillon District Four. Mr. Jay Strickland is the director of Dillon County ATEC Center and representing the Jackie Hayes. We meet all during the year for this focus group. And we've put together a pretty good team, a team that works together, a team that promotes all of the education and the workforce training in Dillon County. I think that's unique. I don't think we've ever done that before in the county. And so we meet, we probably meet sometimes twice a month, getting together, especially in evidence workforce development, this workforce training that we're working on. It takes a lot of meetings, it takes a lot of work with all to put it together and to keep everything moving down the road. Really, it's like herding cats when you get that many people together, you know, because every cat wants to go its own way. And so if you rub the cat the wrong way, then you rub somebody else. But we've been very, very, very successful in this effort as far as moving forward. And some of the accomplishments of the Workforce Development Focus Group is that we coordinated with local industries, training programs that would meet their workforce training requirements. As I shared with you earlier, our greatest asset is existing industry. That we've got to take care of our existing industry. We've got to provide for them. If one thing that gets the industry upset is that we put all of our focus on a new industry comes into town and the industries that's been here for 15 to 20 years, they feel like they've been put on the shelf and they're not being, receiving the attention that they'd like to receive. And so we have to be careful with that. So we met with industry along with this Workforce Development Focus Group and we wanted to see what they need, what kind of workforce training requirements do you need. And we met with them the first time and it was a shocking revelation to me that the existing industries in Dillon County, we did a survey of the existing industries. That was before Wyman Gordon, about the time Wyman Gordon was coming on board. And we asked them to complete a survey and tell us how many new employees they were going to be looking for in the next year. You know what that number was? 150. 150, just with the existing industry. I know we got Wyman Gordon coming in with 415 or 420, whatever we got, but existing industries telling us that we're going to need 115, 150 new employees this year ourselves with what we got. So when you put that in the pool along with the other employees that we got to train, train, you got to find jobs for, then our priority's got to be workforce training. It can't be anything else. Y'all recruit it. We've got to get the training done. And we feel like that's our role as a public private partnership is that we've sort of adapted that role and so we're putting it together. We're trying to create training with, in coordination with the existing industries to make that work. We also created a dual credits program with Northeastern Technical College and the Dillon and Latta School Districts, which means that kids can go to school, go to school. And when they graduate from high school, they can take some college level courses in high school through Northeastern Technical College. And they can really graduate from high school with a two-year technical college degree along with the high school diploma. That's not bad. And so when we put that dual program together and that dual program training is going to be in CNC machines, those kind of things, as we went forward, you'll hear more about that, the mechatronics and those kind of things, that those kids will be able to learn in school. I think that's a great thing. Because when we get those kids coming out of school and now we met a month ago with all the leaders and apprenticeships and internships in South Carolina, as far as putting together internships and apprenticeships for our high school kids. Now, what's simply amazing is that they're going to work with the colleges and allow some apprenticeships there. What apprenticeship is, that they can go to school and work at the place and sort of learn hands-on experiences as they go forward. But what they've agreed to do and Wyman Gordon's on board with it, Wicks is on board with it, Harbor Freight's on board with it, that they're going to use some of our high school kids, we had to negotiate that underage stuff, to where the state's got a program, to where they will provide the workers comp, they'll provide the liability for those kids to be able to go from high school, go out to a Wyman Gordon, go out to a Wicks, go out to a Harbor Freight and work and pick up any of the liability that the companies were worried about. So we put that together and hopefully this next coming school year, we'll have some kids as they co-opt an internship out of Wyman Gordon and Wicks and those kind of things. Can you imagine a high school senior that's being trained in this and also being taught in school and then he has the opportunity to go out in the last half of his day, because most kids are seniors. When I was in school, we had six periods over day and we had to go to school every day. But now those kids on their last half of the day and seniors, they're just making time, you know, they're just looking for something to do. So if we can pull them to work and get them out of this training, then that will give them something to do, be the only God training that will help them. And hopefully, when they graduate from high school, they get a job. So that's what we're looking for there. So we created that dual program, credit program with them, promoted joint cooperation between N E T C and Dillon ATEC Center to share training facilities. That was, you'd say, well, that's easy. It's not easy. When you get a state technical college and a school district, you say, well, all those are together. They may be together now, but they were not together, you know, because they sort of felt like their turf was getting invaded and their turf was, you know, one wanted to protect the other one. But the irony of it all is that Northeastern Technical College didn't have enough room to do what they wanted to do out here. We cranked the space. And so we had some space down at the Dillon County ATEC Center and we offered them that space down there to do some training down there and they accepted. And then the next part of what I was talking about, we traveled with Northeastern Technical College at the request of Wyman Gordon, the North, Wilkesboro, North Carolina, to tour the Wilkes Community College workforce training facilities. They, Wyman Gordon wanted us to go up and look at a place in Wilkes County, North Carolina, that GE Aviation's got a plant there and Wilkes County Community College was training their employees. And they wanted us to go up and look at that and see if we could do that in Dillon. They wanted us to sort of copy that if we could. And so what we did, when we went up there, we come back, we don't have the facilities that they have. The college, if you can see that technical college, they got, they probably got a technical college on 50 acres of land, they probably got 20 buildings. We're a long ways from any of them. So, you know, we got two little buildings on 10 acres of land. And so we've got a lot of growing to do to get there. But we come back and we put together a program that we felt like would be beneficial to Wyman Gordon and what they wanted to do. An annual packet is a sheet for that, is some CNC basic training that Wyman Gordon developed along with Northeastern Technical College that says, and along with Wicks and the other industries. And this is what we put together as a training program. We started this class, this class last week with 18 students in it. And it's going to run, it's going to run about, took around 35 hours, should get out around the end of September sometime. And then when those classes complete, when they complete those classes, then they'll be training CNC training. And if you look at the next part of that, we requested financial assistance from Representative Jackie Hayes to acquire equipment to train our Dillon County workforce in mechatronics and pre-engineering. Representative Hayes requested $300,000 from the state general fund and the request was approved to purchase this equipment. This equipment is now at Dillon County ATEC Center and pictures are attached. If you will look at the pictures that send this folder, this is three different pictures and that's the kind of equipment that we bought with that $300,000. And if you'll think about it, it's not any money that the county put in it. It's money that we got from the state, simply because we worked together on this Workforce Development Focus Group. And we went to Representative Hayes and he worked with us. And then we brought six machines out at the Dillon County ATEC Center to train mechatronics, pre-engineering. So when those kids go in this class that I just shared with you, they got the machines, brand new, to train on at the Dillon County ATEC Center. We never had those type machines in Dillon County before. And we got $300,000 worth of them and you didn't pay a dime for it. It come out of the state conference, it come out of the state budgets and we got through the technical college systems and we're going to be able to share this equipment now at ATEC Center with Northeastern Technical College and our high school students will be able to train on these at the ATEC Center. So that was, that, this and that, that was a major move for us, we would put that together so that both of them could share. In the beginning, they didn't want to share, but they got to share. And number five says, another funding request was presented to Representative Hayes to provide CDL training on the N E T C Dillon campus. To help provide truck drivers to Harbor Freight and the inland port. You know, all of these things are coming down in Dillon County that's going to have to be dealt with and we're going to have to be prepared for, okay? Again, it's one thing to get industry, it's one thing to get inland port in here, it's another thing to be prepared for our people to be able to do this. Everybody's talking about Dillon County and, you know, I said Dillon County's great, you know, and it is, and we need to, all these jobs, but hey, we can't get them trained. You know, and same thing with the inland port. Harbor Freight's got a world of trucks, trucks coming in out there. And also the inland port that's going to come in here is going to, they're going to need a lot of truck drivers. And so what we were talking, we met with the college, with the dean of students, with Northeastern Technical College, and she said, we'd love to have a CDL class in Dillon. We'd love to be able to train truck drivers in Dillon because inland port, because the Harbor Freight, because of all the trucking that's going on here. That's a lot of money, truck drivers. I mean, if somebody can get their CDL license to drive a truck, they make a pretty good living. And I said, well, let me see what we can do. And we contacted Representative Hayes and he said, well, what do you need? So I went back to the college, I said, what do we need shared? She said, we need two tractors, we need two trailers, and I like to have a simulator for the train truck drivers and just simulate the driver. And I said, well, what's that going to cost? She said, that's going to cost about $230,000. I said, well, let's go back and see what we can do. And she said, by the way, I'd like to have a forklift to go with that so that we could also train them as forklift drivers, too. So that, you know, Harbor Freight, they do a lot of forklift driving stuff out there. So we'd like to do that. I said, what the heck, let's just go for it. So we put that package together, $260,000. We went to Representative Hayes, said, okay, Coach, we need another $260,000. We want to do a CDL class, we need two trucks, two trailers, we need a forklift, a forklift class. And the coach never changed words, he said, let me start working on it. And that was a month ago. I checked with him last week, he said he's on schedule, he said, I've almost been able to do it. He said, if he got us $300,000 to buy the machines, well, I said, Coach, to be sure, you can get us another $260,000 to buy this other stuff with. So that's going to be almost $600,000 that's going to come back into Dillon County that the county taxed money that's spent down on, that I were born and our public private partnership working on this focus group was able to put together to bring back to Dillon County. So at the end of the day, we're going to have the CSC training where we can train our kids in the high school and in the college level. And on the backside of that, we're going to start a CDL training class out at the college with two trailers, simulator and a forklift, train forklift training and all that. Now, won't that fit well with inland port? Won't that fit well with what we're trying to do? So I think that we're well on target. So that's money that we brought into the county. Y'all been after us that we don't pay our way, we don't pay for ourselves, we don't do this. You know, and I thought that, I thought that our answer was going to be grant money. I thought if we get grant money, you know, this is amazing that once you start, you don't realize where you're going to end up at. We also acquired a grant rider, so we were here last time and we've already applied for a grant from Purdue, but you know how that goes, it may or may not. But I'm telling you, we got almost $600,000, so we already got, that we're going to have equipment with that's going to be here. And the Purdue grant was $100,000 and that probably cut that down to 10 at the end of the day. And so that's probably all we would get. But if we can pursue all the avenues that we got going now along with the workforce training avenue, because workforce training is big in the state. And the state wants to invest in Dillon County. So that's where we're at there. And so we also sent to Northeastern Technical College and local industries in developing a curriculum that would meet the requirements of our local industry workforce training needs. And the most recent of these classes, I shared a while ago, started last week with 18 students. And the Dillon County Public Private Acquired Services of a Grant Rider requires grants that assist us in our Dillon County economic development projects. And our first grant request was Purdue and this grant was suggested to assist us in our workforce training efforts and we're presently preparing a grant application to Dillon County. So we're moving along, we got things going and we're in a wide and we're in high gear in the public private partnership. The Dillon County Public Private also created an airport standing committee to look into the possibility of upgrading the Dillon County airport facilities. Richard Schaefer and Charles Taylor was appointed to this committee to work as the county administrator and county council. And they met with the county administrator and the FAA and are moving ahead with this project. So airports are essential to economic development. You say, well, why don't we airport Dillon when you get all the inland ports and all these companies coming in here? They want to land their planes here. They don't like to land in Florence, they don't like landing there, they want to land here. And if we can upgrade our airport and get that going to the point to where we can get it usable, usable means that we got fuel there, that we got facilities there, that can, when they fly in, they can be serviced and they can do that. You say, well, how is that going to work? It's going to work because we can make it work. It'll be a good thing. Airport would be a good thing for us in Dillon County. And it will help us in our economic development arm as we move forward with that. And I got some recommendations and future goals that I want to share with you in closing today. And this is just some of my thoughts and my ideas as chairman of the Economic Development Public Private Partnership, that I've been in this thing for several years now and I see it works. And I see the potential and the things that we could do. And it's just, it's just, I think we're living beneath our privilege and all this stuff. And our board is certainly, you know, at the forefront, driving this machine. But the recommendations and future goals, Dillon County Public Private Partnership recommends that council seriously consider a more active role in partnership as we move forward with economic development projects in Dillon County. The partnership was created for the purpose of providing a vehicle that can operate in the role that is presently being occupied by the Marlboro Development Team. We envision the partnership being an acquisition to buy, sell and develop property that would be beneficial to the citizens and future businesses and industries of Dillon County. The partnership is a nonprofit organization that can take advantage of any positive gains and return these profits to economic development projects in the form of workforce training, infrastructure needs, or any worthwhile project that might need assistance. We strongly recommend that the council consider expanding the role of the partnership in future Dillon County economic development projects to take advantage of the many positives that the partnership has to offer. I know I'm taking up a lot of your time today, but I don't come for once a year and I'm going to talk to you today. The partnership was created as a public private so that it could function the way I just talked about. That's what it was created for. Now, that being said, I know that we have personalities and I know that we have people that some of us just don't like, all of us are out there. And when we got things going on that we don't like, you say, why you talking to this council? I'm preaching. I talk about things, I'm preaching. We've got to get beyond that stage if we're going to ever be able to accomplish anything in Dillon County. We could take this public private partnership, do the same thing that Marlboro Development Team did and keep that profit in Dillon County. We could have took the money that was made in that, and I know a lot of them may want to hear from us, don't hear, okay? We could take the profit that was made in that, turn it around, because we're not profit, we're not here to make money. But we could do the same thing. We could have a workforce training building out on the college campus, pay for it with what was made in the other, other end of the deal. I might criticize anybody or pile a tool. But I'm saying that the public private was created for that purpose and for that reason. I want y'all to consider that, whether it's me, my turn's about gone, so you deal with somebody else, but I, you know, I'm suggesting and I'm recommending that you look at that because that way you can keep the funding and whatever you want to do in Dillon County can keep it in house. You say, well, how can you make it work? You can make it work. Other counties do that. Other counties make it work that way. That's the purpose of the public private partnership, is that you do it that way so that you can keep all of the money in the same house. And I suggest that you do that. If it was me, I'd do that. If it was my business, I'd do that. But you're the councilman, it's your call, it's your choice. You do what you think's best for you and your constituents. But I recommend that you strongly look at that and you give the partnership a bigger, stronger role in that. We've proven that we could put together focus groups, put together people and put together projects. We've got you $600,000 in the county already. There's other money out there that can come in here. There's other projects out there that we could get and make it work, make it work. But we got to work for it. We've got to work together. And so I think leaving that with you, I want you to think about that. I also recommend the partnership be more involved in economic development projects from the conception to completion in order to bring workforce training to the negotiating table. This plan of action would ensure that going forward, workforce development would always be in the forefront of these negotiations. Hopefully, we've learned from our past experiences that workforce development should play a major role in economic development recruiting. As we all know, an available and skilled workforce will always attract major industry to our county. I think we failed and passed on some of this. We've got to learn to talk about workforce training at the table in the negotiating table. We can't go back to industry later and ask them to be a participant in workforce training. We need to get that in up front. I'm learning and Tony would probably tell you the same thing. Is that we've got, that's got to be part of our negotiating process, it's got to be workforce training. Because when we go back to these industries and we ask them for money for workforce training, they're very leery about doing that. But they would be more comfortable with it up front. But they would be more comfortable with it up front. So I'm suggesting that, I'm recommending that going forward, that somebody sitting at that negotiating table will talk about workforce training and workforce development. And that way, we'll be further down the road than we are now with the Wyman Gordon deals, with the Harbor Freight deals, with whoever we are, whoever we're with, wherever we're at. It will help us in our progress to move forward, not only in recruiting industry, but we are able to provide and avail over workforce training. Now, our future goals are to work more closely with all of the entities in Dillon County to promote economic development. And our county and some of these goals, as listed below, continue to work with our workforce training focus team as we focus on a better, trained, and higher-skilled workforce for Dillon County. That's our goal, is to continue doing what we're doing. And we want to continue to pursue airport upgrades. We want to continue to apply for grants to promote economic development in Dillon County. We want to promote development of a frontage road at Highway 34 and I-95 exit. We need that. We were working on that at one time, and that sort of failed by the wayside. But I hear people talk about hotels and restaurants and all that. We've got to give them a place to build. We've got to have somewhere to build. And we would open that property up out there, the frontage road at 34. And all of, we pursued that. We've done a lot of surveying, and a lot of, we've talked about it before. But we're going to put it back on the table. We've got to develop that area out there. We've got franchises that will come in here if we give them somewhere to go. We've got to promote development of a franchise hotel at Highway 34 and I-95, or the south of the border exit. Either one of those, either or. Again, existing industry is a major part of our county. Existing businesses is a major part of our county. I was talking to Mr. Richard Schaefer about this and about a franchise hotel. And he said, "Well, we got the land. Then I'd be glad to lease to them. And I turned out one of my motels for them to build it on." So we've got all of that out there. He's got infrastructure. He's got water. He's got sewer. He's got all of that already out there. He said, "Well, that's Mr. Schaefer." So be it. I mean, you know, they don't pay the $35,000 a month taxes to our county over here. You know, that's a pretty good contribution toward our county. But we need to look at that. There's ways that we can work with these people to put it together to make plans work and work for them and all of us. Like he said, "I don't want the hotel." He said, "But a franchise is looking for land and somewhere to build. Ideal location, what better place could they build in there than the lands already built in for?" Just an idea. And also promote development of several franchise restaurants in Dillon County. We all hear that. You know, we need a better restaurant. We need those kind of things, so we're going to be part of that. Encourage businesses located all at I-95 exits by providing lists of real estate locations available to franchises for development. We're going to put together a list of available properties that we can model out franchises all over. Try to encourage them to come into our restaurants, what they'll afford every in Dillon County. We want to promote development of a new automobile dealership in Dillon County. Somebody asked me about that. So I hear that all the time. We're one of the few counties on it that does not have a new automobile dealership. And I hear that. Y'all probably hear it too. And so that's where I go. He said, "Why you put us a couple?" You don't ever know. If you'd have told me last year that we will have $600,000 with the new equipment and then coming from somewhere else. I said, "Man, we can't do that. We break on one in $5,000 grant, you know, from Purdue." But you know, you don't ever know until you try. But encourage and promote economic development in Lakeview, Atlantic communities of Dillon County in order to bring jobs to the rural areas of Dillon County. And we must provide jobs for our rural communities. That's a big thing for me. We've got to have Dillon, out Lakeview, Atlanta. We've got to have, we really do. They're rural areas. They're outside. There are companies that go there. Everybody don't have to have a front property on I-95. There are companies that we can get over there or if you're still over there, that we get a job. I pastor a church in Lakeview, and they would take anything. Anything, because they don't have anything. And any type of industry over there would have them, and it would encourage them. We could be shopping on them. And I'm not looking for a Volvo or Mercedes or anything out there. But I am looking for some of these smaller companies that we could get them there. What would it do for Lakeview communities? First, what would it do with Atlanta? If you could get an industry with 15 employees or 100 or whatever you want? It's not going to be major. But I mean, we've got the possibility. And so we need to be looking at our rural areas and try to stay in there. And that's going to be one of our major things. So that was my report to you. And does any of you have any questions on that part of it?
Mr. Pro.
Yeah, I do. I heard you referenced the money that was made on the, I guess you were referring to the spec building, the sale of the spec building. How much money was made on that deal?
I don't know. Nobody knows.
Well, how do you know money was made?
I don't know.
Well, if you don't have actual figures. I have some figures at my house. I know that the Marion County building, a bid was put in for $2.5 million on the spec building in Marion, MBCon building. This building, everybody that built on it built $2.5 million. And nobody has any documentation showing where any less money was bid. And I just can't figure, you say that money, I don't know how much money was made if any.
Well, I'm sure money was made. I don't know. Nobody knows. You can't find out. Nobody, the Marlboro Development Team will not, you know, they don't want to disclose it.
About Marion County?
Well, I don't know about Marion. I'm talking about Dillon. I don't know about Marion.
Same building?
Well, I don't know about Marion. I'm talking about Dillon. They didn't have the same setup that we had. They didn't have the Marlboro Development Team over there as a middle person transacting their business.
They don't have Wyman Gordon buildings or?
Well, I mean, you're not here to debate that. But you're here questioning what I said. And I know there was money made on that. I don't know how to do it, but it costs. How about you give us numbers on this? We can look at it. That'd be an interesting thing to do.
It was private deal. Why didn't it have anything to do with us?
But it should be a public deal because it was public funds. It should be a public. See what I'm saying? I mean, that's the only thing I'm saying. If it's a private deal, we shouldn't be doing private deals. We should be doing public deals and everything. It was county money. It was public money. That was real money.
$2.5 million.
That's not true. We bought an existing building, as you remember. We bought a building just like we would do anywhere else. We had evaluated and looked at existing building. We bought it after it was already completed. So that's the same thing that...
Yeah, but you entered into an agreement with them doing, to buy it in the year.
We did.
Didn't you enter into an agreement with them to buy it in the year?
Once it was completed.
Okay.
I don't know how much money was made or not. But I'll just say this. For the first time in the history of Dillon County, we finally got some good heavy industry in.
I'm not criticizing that. I'm not criticizing it when us getting industry in here. But what I'm saying is that we can do that ourselves in-house and do the same thing.
Well, I would hope that we'll eventually get to the point.
I hope so. That's what I'm saying. I say recommending going forward. That that's what we look at. And we can make it happen if we want it to happen. You know, if we want it to happen, it can happen.
Well, maybe Marion will tell us what they made on it. Maybe these people will. But I don't know myself. I'm on the county council. What money was made, or what the cost was, or what the cost? I just know that the companies involved all bid $2.5 million on this bill.
Well, I'm not here to dispute you on that. But I'm here to say that there was money made on the budget because nobody works for nothing. And that somebody makes some money. And so what I'm saying is that we can do the same thing with what we want to do here. That's the reason the public-private was created, is to be able to handle these transactions like that. But we've got to trust one another. You know, we've got to be able to work together. And that's why our problem is that we haven't been able to work together and to do things that we need to be together. We proved that with our workforce focus group. We've got a group working together on this workforce focus group. You'd have told me 10 years ago you'd be working together with that group. I said, "There's no way." But we do. And we produced $600,000 almost for Dillon County. That's not bad.
Well, I'm very proud of the effort y'all made. And I commend y'all for what you did. Because for the first time, we have a group that was appointed that is doing the job.
Well, I appreciate that. And I'm not here, you know, to kick at it on the fact. But I just recommend things, you know? And I know what we can do. This is what we can do when we work together. And that's what I want to say.
If you move to the next stage that you're talking about, the public-private, would you also have to move to the next stage of putting people on salary in that committee? Or would it still be a nonprofit?
It would still be a nonprofit, but you may, I don't know. What I'm saying, all this all kind, it would all be speculation at this point. No, it's according to what you do, where you go, and all of that would be measured into that project. It would all be incorporated in that. Would we have management failure, whatever? I don't know. But we're not looking for that. We're still be nonprofit. We're not looking to get paid. We're not, I'm not trying to correct myself. Chuppa, if that's what you're saying. No, I'm not trying to do that. But what we do and the work that we've done has certainly been, you know, because we were appointed here. We're public servants, and that's what we want to do. And we would do the same thing with that as we did with the workforce training. And I don't, you know, sure, you probably need some work, but our secretaries don't have that. I'm not going to take any jobs we've been created. I see the money turning back over though, if you could turn it around and reinvest it in the county. I see that happening, and if we could get us a building. We're struggling to get a building and things like that for workforce training on one hand, but on the other, let me say this while we're talking. I met with Marlboro Electric. And William Fleming is a good friend of mine. I'm not here for Bashing Fleming. I'm not here for William. I'm not here for Bashing any of those people. But I met with them, and I asked them to give us some money toward this workforce training. Because if anybody benefited, they were ones that benefited from it. And he said they didn't have any money to invest in workforce training in Dillon County. I mean, and I'm not, I don't have an axe to grind, but then you brought it up, Harold. And you don't know what they made or whether they didn't make. But I know they are making money now with electricity out there. I know that. If they don't, they'd go out of business. And so we asked for that. And we didn't get that. But a lot of people did that. But I'm not here for that. We're in another phase of this thing. We should probably should be the...
Anybody got any other questions? We allow you to come by more than once a year. We allow you to come out to some workshops where we can sit here and talk, and you can explain to everybody what you think, really what's going on. Because it looks like you've really done a lot. And like I say, I think the public-private board number is here at the break. And we're heading in the right direction. And I think everybody in Dillon County would be deciding. But we got to train our people so that I think we can get the job.
We are headed in the right direction, I think, for the first time. I think that we've really made some inroads. We've got a long way to go. But I think we're headed in the right direction. I think we got this bus going, the stairs going, and we're going.
I would say that Pro, we got to again. People request that we give them that $25,000 we already have in our budget. I'd like to put that more motion that we need.
Well, I would like to request the $25,000 in the budget to help us move forward with this partnership.
No, he ain't got it yet. That's what I'm saying. Yeah, send the budget. We need, he said he wants us to...
I haven't got it for this year.
Right. No, that's from last time. We just approved the last time. It's been approved, but he wants us to very get his $25,000.
For this year?
For this year.
He sent us a request.
Y'all told me, listen, y'all told me when you voted on the money, let's go ahead and discuss. Y'all told me when you voted on the money that you wanted us to do something. But you weren't going to let us have the $25,000. Whether they get grants, we've got to do something. We thought we were going to be able, we thought we were going to be able to get the grants, okay? We thought that was the way it was going to go. But when we got into this process, we found out that maybe we can go in other areas like the equipment requests, those kind of things that we made through our state conference and those kind of things. And we've been more successful doing that than we have with the grant writing, right? Mr. Pro.
Is the money there for $26,000?
Yeah. So we're... See these requests, we'll let it, they'll see we'll let it.
You bring it up morning, write to your chief.
Alright.
Okay.
I don't know about that.
Okay, we got requests? Please, please.
I don't know.
We got a demand request? Send the budget. Okay, we'll submit the request. We'll do that. Thanks, let's go quick. Okay, okay. Does any of my board members want to say anything? I mean, I know I took up all this time. Board members, please stand up.
Do you want to say anything about the airport, other than stuff that I've got? We can do that in different ways.
We'll do that in different workshops. All the board members stand up. All the board members stand up. I appreciate the board members, appreciate everything over there. Thank you again for letting us serve, and we're having fun. This is a working board now. We work and we get things done. Okay, thank you so much.
I hope, you know, we can get you, we don't just get any time every month. We like to know what's going on.
Okay, we're watching that. We're listening. Thank you, Mr. Cower. Thank you.
What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna go by this, the other next recreation request. And then after that, I'm gonna have C there, so Russ Edwards can talk. Right now, we're on feet, recreation.
Okay, y'all have in your packets, um, recreation requests. The first one is Oak Grove Neighborhood Watch. Mr. Pinkley wants $500 to go to Fun Day at Oak Grove. Anybody else want to give? And y'all have a printout up there at each one of your, as how much money you have up in your recreation. Do what?
Yeah, but I just, I throw a hundred fifty. All I have to spend, I'm getting them, I got them.
Alright, the next one is, um. The Tabernacle A M E C family will participate in recreation activities. The church is having a rainbow team, and they're asking for donations. And Archie has given a hundred out of his recreation. That was A M E C Tabernacle, Tabernacle A M E C family. Um, the church is having a rainbow team. It's Reverend Eva Smith Davis. What's this check something made up to? Is it the? Okay, then we have Lakeview Junior American Legion Baseball. They are asking for donations to help offset the cost of team registration, league things, insurance, uniforms, and equipment.
Yeah, so I'm gonna bring your check up, run down. That's what Treese asked about. That's what Treese asked about.
Lakeview Junior American Legion Baseball.
Get the two down. Get the two.
We don't have to even them. I like to do it even them.
Get the two up, we'll be alright.
Alright, then you have, um, Makia Murphy. She is Ms. Hartsford. And she's asking for donations to help out with her, um, 2016 South Carolina pageant. She's Ms. Hartsford. From Dillon. She lives in Dillon, but she's Ms. Hartsford. I think last year we did this, she was Ms. Richland County. But now this year she's Ms. Hartsford. Do you want to give, Frankie? And then y'all have the sports reports in there that y'all have all signed, 150 each.
She questioned about that, just wouldn't that be double what we've already done if we didn't have the first fiscal year budget? Wouldn't it just be due for the next fiscal year budget? Because he's already got it for this year budget, hasn't he?
For the sports report?
Till July, he should go and tell him, the sports report was already done last July. And if he gets it again, it's going to be this July, it means we've got twice in the front. He should get it July the first.
Alright, then we have one for Dillon Guanas Club. Randy is giving 200, um, to help out with the baseball program. They even need to purchase equipment. Anybody else want to give to the Guanas?
Give him 50 for mine.
Then we have the Palmetto State Copperhead Baseball 14U Tournament Team. Um, they're looking for sponsors for a 14U travel baseball team. And they need money for insurance, uniforms, equipment, and for tournament entry fees.
Cliff, we can't carry this money over, we gotta use it on July 1st or.
Just do it. Play it July 1st with new budget.
I mean, what I'm saying, what we have balancing, we can't carry it over for the next half of July 1st. In this budget, we can't carry it to the next budget.
Make that recommendation in the budget. Pass the budget this year, when the money's carried, you know, not still. Before council election or majority council election, it's a lot of money.
Has anybody else want to, for the Palmetto State Copperhead Baseball? Then we have, the last one is American Legion Post. Um, they're requesting support from you to help select delegates from our local schools. Dillon Christian, Dillon High, and Loudon High to attend the Palmetto Boys' State at Anderson University from June 5th through the 11th. The sponsor fee for each delegate is 300, and they usually send about five. And then I had, um, Stevie wanted to do Paul Chapman Golf Tournament. It's gonna be Friday, June 3rd. Wanted to get 100. Anybody else want to do anything?
Liz has already got it. Liz has already called me out after that.
And I also want to do $100 for Aubrey Goodwin. She's also, she's Ms. Darlington High, and she lives in Dillon. She's in the Miss Teen Soccer on the Pad.
Give him 50 for me.
That's for Aubrey, you give him 50. That's all I have right now.
We have our promotion to cook them for recreational players. So, in discussion on the favor of our name. Now, I'm looking to sign that, which is Ed, we have Mr. Russ Edwards.
Thank you, Council, for letting me introduce myself and talk to you just a little bit about what I'm after. I'll try to cut the chase, because I know you've got a granddaughter to go watch pretty soon. Okay, okay. Well, I, I'm gonna shortchange you, Mr. Coward, but I've got some, basically a map that will be helpful for our discussion for the rest of you. And we're gonna skip all of the yada, yada, yada stuff at the beginning and cut straight to something that'll. We'll get to the point quickly this way. Hope y'all will appreciate that. So, you undoubtedly know a little bit about the project that we're referring to here. This is on a south parcel of the Bethia Brown property over by 34. These are two properties that Richard Bethia, his family, um. A couple of years back in, I think, 2014, put these up for. So, do you mind, Mr. Coward, if I ask y'all to just share?
Oh, yeah, we could.
Yeah, one more. Just a tiny bit about Corona Panasonic. We're a global company. We work in research and financing, development, which is our particular niche up in Charlottesville. I'm from Greenville, don't hold that against me, but grew up in Greenville and Charlottesville now. Development, construction, engineering, ownership and operations of these kind of small power plants. Solar power plant. So, some time ago, we went with Larry, talked through his zoning, just make sure we're okay there. That was back in 2014. As y'all know, we started having some conversations with Clay and Tony last fall, 2015, about two things. One, some tax abatement, wanted to talk about the fee and lieu. And two, wanted to talk about an easement that we're in need of, that I'm, we'll get to it, but I'm showing you there on that screen. I believe last month it was on the docket for y'all to talk about the fee and lieu. And completely understandably, we heard back there are some current concerns of basically using a fee and lieu agreement. And a legislation that's in the House right now, it was in the House, I don't know if it's already passed yet or not, but. The S 626 bill that's being passed, which basically sets some standards for personal property taxes. For equipment, for solar, and a couple of others. Hearing that, we quickly wrote and retracted our request and said, we'll punt that, that's fine. We don't want to be in a situation where it appears that we're trying to do double tipping there, using those adversely for the county. On the other hand, we've got Duke on our back right now to name a spot where we're gonna be connecting to their grid. And so, you know, since the fall, we've had a conversation about a potential easement through a neighboring property that is currently under option. Probably not saying this right, but under option with the county or the county's entity. And so, while we've had good conversations with the owner, y'all know North Hughes, we've had great conversations with him. He's amenable, but doesn't want to do something that contradicts, understandably contradicts the county or the county's wishes. And legally, he's under option with you and couldn't do that without your consent. What we're after is just a comfort letter or something that would, after I explained what we're looking for, that would say that the county. If we were to negotiate this with Mr. Hughes, with the property owner, that the county wouldn't object to this utility easement. In front of you, there's the page that I handed you, which is a big map, and the page right after, which is a little bit zoomed in map. There's already in the parcels under the county's optioning, kind of on the northeast corner there. Curtis Property and Hamilton Property, right up against Long Street and 34. There's already a 230 KV transmission line that's shown in orange. That's not us. That's a Duke power line, high line that runs straight through there. You've probably seen it as you've driven by. About 100-foot easement or 100-foot right-of-way underneath that high line already exists. Our request is for an adjacent, immediately adjacent 30-foot utility easement. We would be putting up not high line, not big transmission lines, but small power poles. Probably one on each end of the property, likely one in the middle, but maybe not. To span across that area, shown in blue on both of your maps. We hope this has nothing to do with the tax situation. That will get worked out and is a different conversation. We hope this is just a conversation of, if that transmission line is not suspected of going anywhere, which I, I guess I would suggest it probably. And if the council, if the county sees no objection to it, we'd like some amount of comfort continuing and finalizing our conversation with Mr. Hughes and his family. I think that's about it. I'll stick around afterwards to meet some of y'all that I haven't met. Oh, alright. See, I told you I'd be concise. Yes, sir.
I was looking at the map. We've gone, we spent a lot of money developing this industrial park.
Yes, sir.
And my major concern is that this power so farm would be really right beside a road that the state just spent about 1.2 million dollars putting in. And my concern is, we have hundreds of thousands of acres in Dillon County. And I'm sure that lots of people would like to lease the land. And my concern is, it's located right in the middle of prime industrial property.
Yeah, I understand exactly where you're coming from. We're putting in there something that's gonna be detrimental to the industrial park or detrimental to the taxes that the county would receive. That would be a major issue. Mr. Bethia thinks otherwise, and his family thinks otherwise. They've had other folks previously in there to look at that property, and the kind of improvements they saw they would need to do was prohibitive. That's why in 2014, I believe, I believe that was the expiration of their option. And he decided not to renegotiate that option with the county, but moved forward with selling these privately or developing these privately.
How did you choose this particular site in the entire county?
Well, mostly due to the substation location. So, we look for areas that are either industrial, heavy industrial, or near a substation where we're not gonna be siding a property. So close to people's homes, that's a very sensitive topic that we try to side away from where. There's not a whole lot of, there's a whole lot of detriment to folks' residences. But we just try to pick places that are a little bit more friendly to industry and, like I said, the substation location.
Mr. Edwards, if he would stay around after the meeting?
I'm not too, I'm not, they're probably logging up really. How long did the Lee family give the family the option they could have got building that land for? About 10 or 15 years?
I couldn't.
Well, he said in a letter, they had like 10 years, 15 years, like a good year.
Yeah, we have five-year options.
They've been tied up for what, two, five years already?
Yeah, the situation was, we talked to Mr. Bethia, and we pronounce it Bethia, that first B. Uh, when we talked to Mr. Rick Tini-Bethia, at that particular point, what he conveyed to me was that. He wanted to sell the property privately. He didn't want to renew the land option. And, you know, which is his, is his choice to do that. But I have to agree with Councilman Moody, and I've expressed this to the company, Corona Development. Not against solar farms. I do have a concern about the location. But again, I think solar farms are good because the energy is good. But the location, considering the fact that we spent a lot of money on certified sites in industrial development. But maybe that's something that we can discuss privately.
Sure.
Or after the meeting.
Help me clarify, Mr. Moody, since it's zoning compliant, since it's a privately held property, and since he's developing in that way. What I want to make sure that we're not doing to Richard, frankly, our company in investing in that property. Having lost that option with Richard, that, you know, an objection to an easement, or an objection to that property. We're not, we have no intention of building in a place that's a prime location, right? But Richard split up that property north and south, or rather decided to sell to north as road frontage. The environmental work he had done on the north side looks far more prime for an industrial sale. The property we got was sloppy settings. The property we got had, has foundation issues, which we can build on. But he did not feel like it was likely for development to come in there on that southern property.
Well, my sole concern is who would want, who is going to locate in the future around this particular site? Whether that would affect some other industry in the future.
I understand.
Might shy away from locating here after we put all this money in infrastructure out there. That's my main concern. I'm all for solar energy. I just think there's a better location than this particular one, but that's just my opinion.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Somebody said if you hang around after, he does mean, you guys have some questions?
Yep, absolutely. Thank you, Council.
We have a number six to have finance before.
This is as of end of April. Currently, we got 406,3,944 dollars more revenue than had expenses. Still, 145. I think Clay wanted to make some comments on that.
Yeah, I was just gonna make some, just general comments, make sure Council's understanding. We've completed all of our grant funding projects that we did at the EDA, CDPG, RevGrants. All the state grants associated with Harbor Freight, Lyman Door, have all been closed out for this year. So, it took us a little while to get all that closed out. So, we're in the process. Harbor Freight did notify us back in March and April, and they did move out of the Mohawk Building. So, we got the Mohawk Building open, which Mr. Neil knows about that. We had a month-to-month lease with them, so they, they, they're 30 days notice. We like this somewhere else in that part. We should be finishing up on all of our other projects concerning, you know, the, with the, with the grant fundings on that part there. The two other projects we've got on there are the Lakeview Loudon Infrastructure Projects, which we, there was, they were the old capital project sales tax funds that we used on that. Those are the only two things that'll probably be carried over to the next fiscal year budget. I don't think we'll get any grant money, you know, that I know of right now, between now and June 30. We may, we make it lucky between now and June 30. If we do get some grants between now and June 30 for commitment, between now and June 30, I'll put it in fund for 145, because that's easier for us and the auditors to check on that too. Just to reiterate, like I said, the infrastructure money that we use for the capital project sales tax. As y'all remember, Council deemed them, you know, complete as of 2013, so that's been about three years ago. These are remaining funds available. Any funds that are not used up, basically will carry over to the previous year unless Council decides to do something else with those particular projects. We did get a request from the town of Lakeview, but the last couple of months, me and Mr. Barry have responded. We gave them all the information, and the town of Lakeview wanted a copy of when the ordinance was passed, when, what we gave with the funds. When we received the monies and all that stuff, and the ordinance and all that. We provided all that information to their attorney, Mr. Barry and I provided all that information to them. We also suggested Mr. Ken DeBoes, because Mr. Barry was not here at the time, answering additional legal questions. If y'all remember, 2013, when y'all were on here, in 2013, we consulted with Association of Counties, Mr. DeBoes looked at the law, we looked at, associated with the law. The law says we needed to do a, you know, we needed to do a budget, put it in the budget as a three-riz in the public hearing. So, that's what we did, we followed basically what the Southland Association of Counties, lower department revenue, funding on those. So, I don't know what any more we do, it's really up to the whole council to decide on how they want to spend those monies and what they will do. Over the last three years, we've basically put those monies in those particular areas, because those are the monies left over, we wanted to spend in those particular areas. So.
Are you referring to the article that was in the paper?
You know, I don't want to get into political, but I'm just saying that, you know, if there was any confusion here, hopefully I can clear that up.
I'm kind of confused, because they're saying that all the projects wasn't completed, I mean.
All the projects have been completed since 2013. It's clearly stated, a number of articles written about that. All the projects have been clearly stated. The Southland Association of Counties, level Mr. DeBoes, said we had to follow certain procedures, which we did, followed to the letter, 2013, 2014 budget. We approved that project originally to Council. There were some monies left over. We took those monies, we could have put them in the general fund, or we could have used them to reallocate to different projects. We decided that since the monies came in with the capital project sales tax for those particular areas, we would spend the money, the remaining money in those particular areas instead of just putting it in the general fund. So, it's there, it's allocated here. The monies have been audited for the last three years, so I know they're there.